Thank you, thank you. Okay, we're going to get started. Thank you all so much for all of you coming to just see me. So, we're gonna get started. First order of business is a ceremonial swearing in of myself by Judge Fanon Rucker. If you could come forward.
I state your name and repeat after me.
I, Stephanie Summer O'Dumas.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
Of the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
Will administer justice without respect.
Will administer justice without respect.
To persons.
To persons.
And will faithfully and impartially.
And will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All of the duties incumbent upon me.
All of the duties incumbent upon me.
As Hamilton County Commissioner.
As Hamilton County Commissioner.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
This I do.
This I do.
As I shall answer unto God.
As I shall answer unto God.
Congratulations again.
I'm gonna, I'll go back here. Yeah, I have just a few words to say. And as you all know, I always have words to say. So I can have a microphone. First, I want to thank God. Too much is given, much is required. We are held responsible for what we have and what we are blessed with. Talents, knowledge, wealth, time. It is expected that we use these well to glorify, to glorify God and benefit others. With great power comes great responsibility. I am responsible for 830,000 residents and I do not take that lightly. Second, I want to thank my family who have supported me through all my political aspirations and accomplishments, but also more importantly, through life, if they could stand. My mom was here four years ago and she passed a few months after I was sworn in, but she lived to see it happen. Thirdly, my office staff who worked so hard to make me look good. Since I like looking good, they will be with me for the next four years. If you could please stand Bishop Hilton and Kimberly Lee. Fourth, the people. This last election showed me that the people believe in me. They trusted me, my integrity and my honesty. And they believed in me enough to take their precious votes and vote for me again. The agencies, the businesses of Hamilton County that believed in me and demonstrated that they wanted to put me back in office for four more years. Fifth, I want to thank this awesome group of county staff. The county staff here, if you could please stand that work for Hamilton County. There's a few of them back there. They continue to make me proud and they work so hard for the people of Hamilton County. Sixth, Judge Fanon Rucker for agreeing to perform my ceremonial swearing in. We started this tradition in 2011 as I was a village manager in Lincoln Heights. So you get ready for more, get ready if I call you. So in 2018, I made my first campaign speech. I asked Judge Rucker to put on his schedule my swearing in before I even started my race in 2018. He said, "Okay, I will." So the judges always prepare for the next race. Lastly, but for the grace of God, there I go. Were it not for God's help, this outcome would have been very different. I have more for the next time I get to talk, but that's all I have for now. Okay, thank you. Thank you all so much. Thank you so much. Okay, I'm gonna get my glasses. I didn't need them for that though, did I? So the first order of business is a motion to adjourn Sunday Day for the year 2022.
Second.
Commissioner Summer O'Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
The next order of business is a motion for nominating Commissioner Reese, Vice President Reese, to act as a temporary president of the Board of County Commissioners. I make the motion.
Second.
Commissioner Summer O'Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Our microphones are so much louder than I'm used to. I would like to make a motion nominating Leslie Hervey to act as the temporary clerk of the Board of County Commissioners.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer O'Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
I would like to make a motion nominating Alicia Reese to serve as the President of the Board of County Commissioners for the year 2023.
Second.
Commissioner Summer O'Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes. I would like to make a motion nominating Denise Drehouse to serve as the Vice President of the Board of County Commissioners for the year 2023.
Second.
Commissioner Summer O'Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes. I would like to make a motion nominating Leslie Hervey to serve as clerk of the Board of County Commissioners for the year 2023.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer O'Dumas.
Yes. I would like to make a motion nominating Kristi Reckel, Lisa Daria and Jeff Aluto to serve as Deputy Clerk of the Board of County Commissioners for the year 2023.
Second.
Commissioner Summer O'Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
I would like to present a resolution designating members of the Board of County Commissioners to serve on various committees, council slash boards for the year 2023.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer O'Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to approve resolution to designate the official representative and alternate for the purpose of voting at the annual meeting of the County Commissioners Association of Ohio in 2023.
Second.
Commissioner Summer O'Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Item number, you serving as president, so you wanna... Item number 10?
Yeah.
Okay. Item number 10 is the passing of the gavel from our 2022 President Stephanie Summer O'Dumas and I will turn it over to her.
Thank you so very much. This passing of the gavel, traditionally it happens where leadership changes quite frequently, but I had thought about that we need an official passing, physically passing the gavel. And the reason why is because there is a story of this gavel. And let me tell you what the story is. The gavel is a small ceremonial mallet used to call attention or to punctuate rulings and proclamations and is a symbol of authority and right to act officially in the capacity of a presiding officer. You tap the gavel against this wooden block to indicate opening and closings. It's also used to keep the meeting itself calm and orderly. Now, this gavel has taken on a life of its own. That's why we're doing what we're doing today. Leadership changes, as I said lots of times. The reporters have tried to make using the gavel a negative thing to reflect some division or dissension among our group. It's not so. That did not work. It became a point of reflection. One day I came in with two gavels. This one is the one when I was the Mayor of Forest Park and this one is for the Commission Board. And so Vice President Reese told me one time when I came in with the two gavels, she did a Kung-Fu motion showing me how I could use both gavels at the same time. She also put out the clarion call to our visitors and our speakers, "Watch out. She might use that gavel on you." But in all seriousness, it is an important element for our meeting if necessary. And now, Madam President, Alicia Reese. I pass you the gavel as President of the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners. We need some music. You say, "But we can do this later." No, I'd like to do it now.
Let me start off by, I want to thank you, Commissioner O'Dumas. I want to thank you for your leadership as President of the Board. And I don't know if y'all saw that she had two gavels. She only gave me one gavel. I'm one gavel short.
Still got it up here.
But in all seriousness, I want to thank you for that. I want to thank both of my colleagues. The look that you see up here on this board has not been the normal look for decades. When you think about, thank you, yes. And when you think about the origin of Hamilton County and how long, we're talking the 1800s to today, how long it's been. But who made it this way? Who made it inclusive? Who made it? Three women elected, diverse women elected. The people did. And I want to thank the people of Hamilton County for standing up. Give yourselves a round of applause. And as indicated, getting here was not easy. My journey to get here, I had to come through a pandemic that we had never seen before. The primary was shut down. We had to vote by mail and many people didn't know how to do that. We had to find a Dropbox that many people did not know existed at our Hamilton County Board of Elections. We had two different dates and so that could be confusing. And we were fighting something out there that we really didn't have a name for it. It was called coronavirus at the time. It's now called COVID-19. We were told to wear plastic gloves and no mask at that time. And then by the time we had the general election, we were told to put on a mask. And so many people had to risk their lives. And that's why I say this race for me, while I've enjoyed being the Vice Mayor of Cincinnati, I enjoyed being a state representative, but this particular office, people put their life on the line and I just can't thank you enough because without you I wouldn't be here. I want to thank my two colleagues. We have been working very hard. I've had a chance to work with each of them these last two years. And these two years, we got a lot done, a lot accomplished on some very difficult times that our county had been going through. But I had to step back and sitting in this particular seat as a President of Hamilton County Board of Commissioners, if my mother was alive, the late Barbara Howard Reese, who grew up in the West End, in the projects, but the projects was not in her. She went on as a singer and entrepreneur and she raised me along with my father, who I'll talk about in a moment. But my mother coming out of high school, applied to work at Hamilton County Government. And she was excited and got the job and went to work, I think, the first day. But then was called and said, "I'm sorry, you are no longer qualified." Not because her resume wasn't right, not because she didn't pass a drug test, she did all of that, but because she wasn't a Republican. She had to be a Republican to work here. They said, "You're in the wrong party." My mother and my grandmother would never, ever imagine that their daughter and granddaughter would be sitting here as a county commissioner and the President of the Board. We're talking one and two generations away. And I don't ever want to forget where I came from and so many people that sacrificed who did not make it. So I want to acknowledge them. I want to acknowledge my father who is here. He's had two knee replacements. The second one, he thought he'd be back up dancing by now. And he has been very much in pain. But for him to come today in the pain and be here with me representing our family and everything he taught us about public service, politics, entrepreneurship, music, everything. He took me everywhere and I just want to thank him for being here today, Dr. Stephen Reese Senior. I want to thank my sister who is here, Tiffany Reese Stewart. I want to thank her. She's with me all the time and everything. And she is very good in her own right, in her own career. And even when y'all see me with the twins, those are her twins. And I want to thank her for being here representing my family. My brother Steven is watching on the YouTube Florida. He has a game that he's playing down there with my nephew. So I just want to thank them as well. Donnie Young, who's also here, my cousin. Any other family members that are here, please raise your hand if I missed you. Okay, all of y'all are my family. So I know some folks is like, "Hold on, wait a minute now. I thought I was your second mama. What's going on here?" Oh, yeah, yeah, my new friendship family, everybody's here. I do want to acknowledge the Reese team because y'all got me here in the pandemic and everything else. Everybody that worked on my campaign, put your hands in the air, stand up to the Reese team. Thank y'all so much. Don't be bashful. We've been on a 25-year journey. So thank y'all so much. We got a lot of elected officials. I know this is dangerous to get to, but it means something. Those who were able to join us, I want to acknowledge them. Judge Janaya Trotter is here, I saw. Mayor Avtav, does he have to leave yet? He had to go to council. He was here. He was one of the first people in the door. And I'm looking forward to working, continue to work with him and even stepping it up even more on a lot of things that we have to work together on. Former Mayor Mark Mallory is here. Derek, stand up, Mayor, you're looking good. You look good, Mayor. Judge Mallory's here. NAACP President Joe Mallory's here. Bill Mallory's here. And they sent a note from Mama Mallory. She told me, "Keep up the good work." So as long as Mama Mallory's here, I'm doing good, I'm doing good. Vice Mayor Jan Michelle L. McCurney is here. Mayor Mumphrey is here, Lincoln Heights. Councilwoman Linda Childs-Jeter is here. State Senator Catherine Ingram is here. She snuck in the back. State Representative Dunney is here. Judge Lubers, I think Judge Lubers was here. There she is, Judge Lubers is here. Councilmember Scotty Johnson was here. I don't know if he had to leave, Scotty Johnson. Our recorder, Scott Crowley is here. Trying to make sure I didn't forget anybody because I do appreciate, we have to work all of us together. Of course, you heard Judge Fanon Rucker is here. Any other? Oh, Judge Triggs, Alan Triggs, thank you. Judge, Judge Wagner is here. Where is Judge Wagner? Where are they sneaking it at? Of course, the engineer, the engineer who always has, he had the best news coming in. $1.6 billion, I want to let you know it's coming for the bridge. Eric Beck is here, our engineer. Did I miss anybody else? Oh, yes, Congressman Greg Lang. I hope he's not congressman-elect. I hope we get to get him in. Did they get a speaker? Oh, Councilmember King, how are you? Stand up. Yes, yes. Did I miss anybody else? Oh, yes, Councilwoman Blue Ash. Tell me one more time. Blue Ash is in the house. Councilwoman, I didn't see you in here. Woodline is in the building. Yeah, I get everybody. I know that's how you get in trouble, but I do, this is one Hamilton County. It is everybody. We got almost 49 municipalities. I claim 49, they say 48 and a half. But we are going to be about one Hamilton County. Everybody, we want the whole county to be strong. And everybody matters. And I think that we have set a tone that we are going to be mixing it up. We're going to open up the process and we're going to connect more throughout our county. And I want to thank our sort of transportation is here. Daryl, thank you for being here. Radio personality, Don Juan Fosso from the radio, Radio One is here. Jeff Burding, FC Cincinnati, we went to the playoffs. We're gonna do it this year. Jeff Burding is in the house. Lincoln Ware is out the door. It must be packed. You got Lincoln Ware. We don't even have enough room to get Lincoln Ware inside the building. And I want to say that everything I do, everything I do, God is first for me. I don't speak for anybody else, but I speak for me. God is first for me. And God gives us all talents and we have assignments. And for me, this is an assignment, so it's bigger than a position for me. I want to thank all the clergy, every clergy that's here, stand up. Every clergy that's here, stand up. All the clerzy, is there Reverend Casey Smith? I just saw, he's outside. Now y'all let him in. I got to get to heaven. Yeah, don't put him outside. And Bishop Walker, thank you for being here. Pastor Jones, you've been with me since a little girl. Thank you so much for being here. I really appreciate it. So Pastor Booth, thank you and all you're doing with the Black Bank, bringing it to Cincinnati. So we have a lot of people, so many people that I could thank, I can go on for days. It means a lot to have you here. I want y'all to look around and know that I need all of your help, we need all of your help. Don't think you're just gonna come in here and wave and get out of here. We're gonna put you to work. Julia Soulfood is in the building. My goodness, my goodness. Greens and Macaroni and Cheese, she's over here. Small business, been here for years in Hamilton County. In all seriousness though, we've got some dates I want to let you know. We're gonna hit the ground running. We're gonna be moving very fast. What I love is that each of us have strengths. Each of us have things that we're leading on. Each of us will be leading on those things and then we'll bring it together collectively to move Hamilton County forward. That's the way we do it. You'll see us all out in the county. We'll be everywhere. This county, our goal is to be the number one county in America. Number one in America. I've been at, Senator Ingram knows when you go to the State House, it's very difficult when you're from southwest Ohio. I've been there and they kind of want to put us last. And we're the place of the innovative ideas. We're the place of leadership. We're the place that is able to move ideas to reality. And we're going to show them is after COVID, hopefully COVID's over, but we on the backside of COVID, we're going to show what happens when a county comes out of this. The innovative ideas, the new technologies, the cures that we're going to be having coming through our research in our hospitals, the help with cancer and other things. All of the things, the Walk of Fame, where you're gonna know that the music came from here and then we got it out to other places. We're gonna show you what affordable housing really looks like. We're gonna show you how to have progress without running people out so the people can be a part of the progress. So we have some great opportunities and this commission, we've been doing a lot of things you may not have known about it because we've been in the work. But I'm here to tell you, my background is in marketing. You're going to know what Hamilton County is doing. We're gonna come with a new rebrand. We're gonna get our stuff out more. We're gonna make sure you're connected and know about things. And so one of the things that I'm excited about is this one Hamilton County brand that I'm gonna really be pushing us to get that out. With that being said, we're gonna roll up our sleeves and get to work right away. I want you to put these dates down. On the 26th of January, our 513 relief bus that helped 4,000 people keep the lights on, keep the rent paid, keep the mortgage paid. We're happy to announce we got over $26 million. We were aggressive and we're rolling this bus out on January 26th. A permanent Hamilton County on wheels. We're bringing Hamilton County to your communities. And so we're excited. We're gonna kick that off on January 26th. It'll be a new Corinthian Baptist church and we'll have more at 10:00 a.m. Mark it down. The bus is rolling this month to help the people. Number two, I want you to put down, on January 31st, I will be hosting our State of the County. The State of the County, so you know where we're going, where we are and how we're going to get there. I'm asking each of you to join us, share with people. It's absolutely free. Come and hear the State of the County. You've heard the State of the Union, you've heard the State of the City of Cincinnati. Now you will hear the State of the County and how we all connect the dots in working together. So that will be January 31st at 5:30 p.m. Please mark your calendars and join us there. I'll have a lot more to say during that time. Today, what I want to say is I want to thank my colleagues. I look forward to continue to roll up our sleeves and get to work. All three of us are very aggressive. We get things done. We're looking to work with our administration under Jeff Aluto and his team will be working collectively with our staff. And we are excited about 2023 and what's going to be one Hamilton County. I would like to end with this. My two staff members, we only get two, so I want y'all to understand that. We called the President's office. We only got two. Each of us only have, I'm gonna say it again, we only got two, so bear with us. Our staffs are working really, really hard. We get a lot done to only have two people. But I'm excited to have Quentin Monroe, Pastor Quentin Monroe, as my Chief of Staff. But I'm excited to have Quentin Monroe, Pastor Quentin Monroe, as my chief of staff. Past President, past SGA President of Central State University, it has been interning at the White House and everything, and he does an excellent job, and I want to thank him. Also want to acknowledge in my office, my next person that you guys need to know is Veda Stevens. Stand up, Veda. Veda Stevens. Veda Stevens is in charge of outreach, policy, and every other title I could give him. These guys, they got a billion titles, they do. But Veda Stevens is a proud graduate of Miami University and come from an internship also from the White House. So we've got two people, but we are looking for volunteers. Anybody would like to volunteer, Veda will take your name today if you want to come and volunteer for that. We also want to announce that each of our offices will now have a paid internship position. I'm announcing that today. So if you are an intern out there and would like to intern with one of our offices, they'll have an application through our HR department, but we do have a paid internship opportunity now for people to come in. We want more people to come into Hamilton County and be the next brains of this county. And so we want to be able to reach out to our young people and our youth and even our senior citizens who may want to come in and help us make Hamilton County number one. So that's what I have to say. I thank God for everything. I ask you for your prayers, your patience. I'm not a perfect person, but I am a person that is a fighter for the people. If I were to leave here today, I want to be known as Alicia Reese was a fighter for the people. So thank you all very much. And President Odomis, I'm going to get that other gavel before you get out of here.
Thank you. Madam President.
Yes. So at this time, I'd like to have Commissioner Denise Drehouse, Vice President.
That's right.
Denise Drehouse.
That's right.
Well, thank you. I will be brief. I just want to say congratulations to my two colleagues, Commissioner Summer Odomis for being reelected.
Yes.
And again, a part of the commission. And Commissioner Reese for becoming the President of the Commission. When I was elected back in 16 and joined this board in 2017, it was a very different look than what it is today. I was the first woman elected to the County Commission and I sat with my two male colleagues and I did proudly. And they were good public servants, Todd Portune and Chris Monzel. And we were getting work done. But I will tell you, the transformation of this commission to what you see here today is historic, it's significant, it is responsive to what people in this community want, and it creates an environment and opportunities that exist now because of the individuals that are sitting at the table. And it's something to pause and reflect on because it really is a moment in time for this county. And it's significant. And so to have voices and ideas that are different from what we used to have just five, six, seven years ago is really something to celebrate and to reflect upon because it wasn't easy. I think all three of us would say, this was not easy. But here we are and we are dedicated to representing this community with pride in response to what we know this community needs. And I think you have seen that in the past couple of years from all three of us, and I look forward to the continued cooperation and teamwork that is represented not only by the three of us, but our staffs who are, you know how staffs are, they're the ones getting it done. We all know that, right? So my staff, Kevin and Chris, are in the back of the room. They are so important to making sure that we understand one another. You know, we're not allowed to talk to each other or it's a violation of the open meetings, right, Michael? And so we are respectful of the Ohio State law that says that, but it's challenging. And so we rely on others to help convey what our ideas are and allow us to work with one another to get things done in the county. So again, I'm proud to be here, I'm proud to be part of the team. Congratulations to both my colleagues and onward, right? Commissioner Odomis?
Thank you so much, since I get the opportunity to speak last, I love it. But I just wanted to add two comments. We accomplished a major goal today. When you introduced all the people that are in the room, these are all the key leaders in this whole county. If they're not here, they're not key leaders. But to have, and as Commissioner, Vice President Drehouse was saying, you know, this has a different look about it. And so this is a major goal that we wanted, that people know more about Hamilton County Commission and what we do. And so I think we have somewhat accomplished that. Secondly, I cannot get out this room if I did not, I'm not going to ask you to stand, maybe I will real quick. My campaign workers who got me here for a second term, if you could please stand, I won't be able to get out of here. Thank you, thank you. And so lastly, we have these big screens up here because we are, IT was so antiquated and everything, and you guys like this, this big screen? Yeah. And I don't necessarily like it because I always tell the cameraman, get my good side. So now both sides are going to be showing. But we tried to improve because of this big tower here and people couldn't see. And so I'm just, I want to thank the workers who made this happen for us and we have a screen up here. And that's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you. I did forget to, I just saw her here, City Council School Board Member, Dr. Kareem Moffett. Thank you for being here. And former Judge Verdon is also, was also here or is here. Thank you. At this time, we do have a resolution I will turn over to Jeff Aluto that we have to pass. It'll be pretty, it'll be quick, so y'all don't have to worry about it.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. Yes, just one additional item of business today. So before you is a resolution appointing an acting prosecuting attorney pursuant to Higher Revised Code 305.02. As the Board is aware, Prosecutor Joe Dieters was appointed Associate Justice to the Ohio Supreme Court by Governor Mike DeWine. So as such, his term or his resignation is effective July 7th of 2023. So the Higher Revised Code prescribes that the vacancy be filled by the Central Committee of the party which appointed the last incumbent, in this case, that would be the Republican Party. But in the interim, as that has not yet occurred, the Higher Revised Code specifically 305.02 prescribes that the Board may appoint an acting prosecutor to serve until such time as that vacancy is formally filled by the Central Committee. The Prosecutor's Office has forwarded the resolution that is in front of you with the recommendation that Mr. Mark Peetmeyer serve as acting prosecutor until the successor takes office. As those of you who've been with the county for even a couple of years probably know, Mark became an Assistant Prosecuting Attorney with the Hamilton County Prosecutor's Office upon passing the Ohio Bar back in 1981. He's been with the county and with the office ever since. He served in the US Army for Operation Desert Storm in 1991. He served as Special Prosecutor for several different counties in Ohio, including Adams, Brown, Butler, Claremont, Green, Scioto, and Warren. He was appointed as Lead Special Prosecutor for the 1993 Lucasville Prison Riot in Scioto County. So he has a tremendous wealth of experience both here locally as well as throughout the state. Also, not to go unrecognized, in addition to his role as prosecutor, Mark provides free legal work for clients assigned to him by the Cincinnati Volunteer Lawyers for the Poor Foundation. So I do forward this recommendation to you at the, or this resolution to you with the recommendation of the County Prosecutor for your consideration as appointing the Acting Prosecuting Attorney pursuant to Revised Code 305.02, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. And this would be a very short turnaround we're looking at. Is that your?
So the Ohio Revised Code is specific that the Central Committee meet no less than five, no greater than 45 days from the vacancy. So this would be a temporary acting appointment until such time as the Central Committee fills that position permanently or on an interim basis until the next election, correct?
Any questions, Vice President?
No questions.
Questions, Commissioner?
Madam President, and the vacancy will be filled by the GLP, correct?
Republican Central Committee, yes. And I would be remiss if I didn't say Mr. Peetmeyer is here with us today if there are any questions, so.
Yeah, let's get him up here now.
There he is, there he is.
No, I'm just kidding, I heard your resume. Okay. I'm sorry. Don't hit that thing.
Okay, all right. If there's no further questions, I would recommend that we pass RC 305.02, Appointing Prosecutor Attorney Peetmeyer, Mr. Peetmeyer.
Second.
Commissioner Reese? Yes. Commissioner Drehouse? Commissioner Summer Odomis? Yes. Any other business? Just a little? Vice President, any other business?
No. I think people want to get to the reception, so.
Okay, we do have a reception right across the hall as we leave. I want to thank everybody again. I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Reese? Yes. Commissioner Drehouse? Yes. Commissioner Summer Odomis? Yes.